Can we have the roll call, please?
Chair Blair Sicklin.
Chair.
Vice Chair Jean Enright.
President.
Secretary Treasurer Wayne Richards.
Here.
Commissioner Joseph Anderson.
President.
Executive Director Emmanuel Alameda.
Here.
Court Counsel John Fumero.
Here.
We have a call.
Okay, can we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, additions, deletions, I know we're going to change the...
Sure, Commissioner, Mr. Chair, we'd like to reorganize the agenda. If you'd like to bring up I four right after the consent.
All right, so do you have a motion to change I four?
So moved.
Commissioner Richard, second.
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, all in favor, all opposed, carries four, nothing. So right after consent, we will do I four selection of the open seat. Down there. Okay, all right, Shami. Anything else?
Nope.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, we got the reorganization approval of the minutes from last meeting. Motion for approval of minutes.
Move approval.
Commissioner Richard.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Enright, all in favor, all opposed, carries four, nothing. Presentations and announcements.
Mr. Chair, you have your presentation in front of you.
Yes, we do. Commissioner Anderson. Let's come on down.
Yeah, she can do it.
Yeah, yeah. Family picture.
You can bear that.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Exactly. Rose between thorn. Exactly. All right, in recognition, Port of Palm Beach Commissioner Joseph D. Anderson for your service, leadership, and commitment to the Port of Palm Beach in 2019 and 2022.
Thank you.
Good. All right, thank you very much for your service.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We do have a comment. Shamba, you want to say a couple words?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Keshamba Miller Anderson, Joseph's wife. I'm also City Council Chair for Riviera Beach. I have not been the very best of health the last few weeks, but I thought it would be very important for me to come out today for him, to support him. Joe has always been very dedicated to whatever it was that he put his mind to do, and being a part of the Port Commission has been something that he took very seriously. Back in 2019, when he first came onboard, as you all know, he did have a stroke, which really impacted him greatly for a number of months. But he wanted to make sure that he attended all meetings. He wanted to make sure that he fulfilled his role as the Port Commissioner here at the Port of Palm Beach. And he says, he has remained very dedicated to everything that he has put his mind to when it came to the port. One of the things that he wanted to make sure continues is that there's transparency here at the port. You know, there have been numerous times where he was just really bothered by, you know, just not being able to make some of the changes that he campaigned on, but he continued to stay steadfast in what it was that he set forth to do. He's very dedicated in terms of making sure that the children of Riviera Beach and all cities that the port represents had an opportunity to find out what the port was, because when he ran, he mentioned about being born and raised here in Riviera Beach, and a lot of times, people really just didn't know what the port did. So he spent a lot of his time making sure that the children of Riviera Beach and those that encompass the port district were aware of what the port offered. And I'm very proud of him. I would be a little biased, and I should be a little biased, but I'm just very proud of him for making sure that he remained dedicated to what he set forth to do, and he's able to leave on his own terms. And if you all have been elected or you're familiar with the elected position, sometimes people can't leave on their own terms, and he's able to do that. And so I'm very proud of him, and he knows that, he knows where I have been through the last few weeks, and he's been making sure that he was the very best husband that he could be, to make sure that he supported me during this time. But I wanted to make sure that I was here for him today. Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, does anyone have anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could you please pull G nine?
All right, so we'll pull G nine.
Move approval of consent minus G nine.
Okay, Commissioner Richard's approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Anderson, name discussion, all in favor, all opposed, okay. G nine, first one floating.
I simply will not be voting, I'm filing Form 8B.
Okay, all right, so on G nine, do we have a motion? Do we accept that?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, Commissioner Enright, second, Commissioner Anderson, all in favor, all opposed, carries three, zero, Commissioner Richards abstaining. Okay, very good. All right, so now we're going to move to I four selection, we'll move that up to, right after consent. And we do have some cards, and we're going to let, since we have quite a few, we're going to let everyone take a minute. If anybody else has a card, that they want to say anything. Margaret Shepherd, where's Ms. Shepherd? Come on up, and you have just one minute to say what you like.
Oh, I can't hear him. Mr. Chair, is your microphone on?
Yes, it's on.
Margaret Shepherd, Riviera Beach. So glad to be back in the house once again, to all of you in your respectful places, to our outgoing Commissioner, Mr. Joe Anderson, my friend, to our own Executive Director, his wife, everybody. I want to say to you, I'm here today because of the election. And the real thing that I want to say to you, I sit with a group of women, we call ourselves the Black Tea Party. It was 278, one of us, I think during the pandemic, we lost maybe about 50. But they sent me back today to talk about electing someone to the chair that we all feel comfortable with. And I think each and every one of you all that I called, I appreciate you because you listen. How you vote, I'm sure we will live with it. The first person we thought about was Peyton MacArthur. I understand that was a wash. I'm kind of devastated that Mr. Jeffrey Jackson forgot to put his paperwork in. That would have been my first choice. But as we go along, 2024, we'll look for Jeffrey to run. But to each and every one of you all, keep us in mind, you're residents, you're citizens, one that we have enough going on in the city, we want to keep the port intact. It's been intact for quite a while, but our due diligence is to come here and just express our thought. If it's not Peyton, and we know Jeffrey did not put in the paperwork, I said to them today, we will go along with anything that you say, because we're here to be of outreach of the community to make things run smooth. Once again, Mr. Anderson, so sorry I didn't get a chance to see the meeting, but kind of ill, mother passed away, and I'm just trying to get it together. Thank each and everyone, the Chair, Vice Chair, all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Shelby Lowe?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. I just came up to let you guys take a look at me. I am one of the candidates and a former Riviera Beach Councilman, and been involved in politics locally here for over 20 years. And I'm still actively involved. I'm a disabled vet for profession, I'm a consultant, and I also started a nonprofit agency, it's the Southeast Florida Public Market Fair Association. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Reverend Masters.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I understand we have one minute?
Yes.
How can a Baptist preacher speak one minute? I don't know.
He'll be erect.
Okay. To all of you, the last time I was in attendance at a meeting with this board, with previous board members, I was very heartened, discouraged, because one of the elected officials disrespected Dr. Enright, and he told her, be quiet. And that was, for me, that was it. So I never came back to, but I'm here tonight because I didn't know Shelby was running. I had a chance to work with him as well. But I'm here to endorse and support Verissa Doss. I had a chance to work with her around the clock, and I can tell you, she worked me to death. And if anybody deserves this seat, I believe this young lady, this young attorney should get it tonight. I'm praying that she does. I've worked with all of you before, Wayne Richards first time out for the Sicklin, and certainly Dr. Enright several times, and Joe Anderson, you know, I think you're a brother. So thank you very much for this opportunity. I just want you to know, I know this young lady, and we've heard some horrible things. She doesn't have six children. She doesn't even have a half of a child. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Gail Coniglio?
Good afternoon.
Another former mayor.
Thank you, Commissioners and Chair Sicklin. I just want to thank you for having me today and the consideration of the seat that is being vacated by Catherine Waldron. I have been the mayor of the town of Palm Beach for 10 years. I know that your service is dedicated, and it is a labor of love. I want to acknowledge, if there is any untoward position toward the town of Palm Beach, that I apologize if there is some negativity, because I want us to now bridge that gap, foster an opportunity to create a new relationship with the Lagoon neighborhood so that we can, in the future, secure the financial and enhance the port. I will work hard to work with you on the team to address the infrastructure that I believe if we pool our resources, we can get additional state and federal money. I will work hard for you, I will hit the ground running, knowing very well that there is a long learning curve, and I will look to you for your historical perspective and your advice. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right, since we have no more cards, Mr. Attorney, would you just go over the instructions so we do it correctly?
Yes, sir. Just by way of background, as you all recall, on October 28th, the Board of Commissioners published a public notice advising any individuals that if they're interested in submitting for the Group Two vacancy, that they were to submit letters of interest or resumes. That was, they were submitted and due on or before November 17th of 2022. And we now have 10 candidates that have timely submitted for the vacant Group Two seat. In your materials, you have a ballot that was prepared by the Clerk's Office. That ballot, in alphabetical order, lists the 10 candidates that timely submitted their information. You're going to select a candidate by placing a score of one, two, or three next to each name. A score of three indicates your top-ranked candidate, a score of three. A score of two indicates your second-ranked candidate, and a score of one indicates your third-ranked candidate. The candidate with the highest number of points shall be appointed to fill the vacant Group Two seat. And I would ask that everyone select, fill in three candidates, each of the three slots. I'll just point out that this is a, the ballot is a public record, and will be available as a public record following this meeting, so just put in the name, no notes or anything of that nature, otherwise it's going to be a public record. And the successful candidate for the Group Two seat will take office in January. On January 3rd, we will have a swearing-in ceremony, and then later in the month, we'll have our regular January commission meeting. So that, again, the successful candidate will be sworn in and take office officially on January 3rd of 2023. And unless you have any questions, we can move forward.
Go ahead.
Two comments, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe a motion to adopt that process would be helpful. That's number one. And number two, I'd like us to reconsider that date. That date, that's for us to decide, and that date doesn't really work for me, so I think a motion to approve the process. Accordingly, I move that we approve the process we just heard, ratify the process.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, all in favor, all opposed, carries four, zero. Good. And what's the other problem?
I'm out of town on the 3rd. Is that date set in stone?
No, it's not.
Yeah, no, we choose the day, of course. Yeah.
Well, we'll talk, we'll talk it up at the end. Because it's just a swearing-in, right? It's not a regular meeting, but, all right, we'll see. All right, we'll talk about it. Okay, everyone, go ahead and fill it out, and who's going to collect the? Thank you.
I should also note that the tabulation will be performed by the clerk.
That's the lawyer you mean wanting to process and approve, that's all. Yeah, nothing to be challenged.
And if I may, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we've also, I've drafted a resolution that will memorialize the final decision and indicate the votes. And again, please, because this is a tabulation based on numbers, again, I would ask that you fill in your top three candidates so that we can have an accurate tabulation. This is a big deal.
Well, you know what? I'm just going to let it stand. There's a technicality to that.
I'm just teasing.
What did the attorney say? Did he say, did he say anything?
Just read the scores for each, okay. Oh, you already got it.
James Bronstein has one vote, Gail Coniglio has four votes, Verissa Doss has eight votes, Tonel, and I'm sorry, I cannot pronounce that last name, has two, and Peyton MacArthur has six. So by the score, Verissa Doss is the new elected or appointed Commissioner.
All right, then, by that score of eight votes, Verissa Doss will be sworn in, our new Commissioner in January, and I'm sure staff will reach out to her in the next week ago, give her all the details. So, very good.
Did you vote on consent? I think you did.
Yes.
Right? So next will be district reports?
Yes.
All right. All right, Commissioners, we were, we've been extremely busy in the past month with numerous community outreach projects and port events. On November 30th, members of port staff met with newly-elected Commissioner Dr. DeAndre Poole to introduce themselves and provide a brief synopsis of what their responsibilities are at the port. We welcomed Dr. Poole and look forward to working with him on the future endeavors of the port. We also hosted the TPA, the Transportation Planning Authority, more members, that included the City of Boca Raton Council member Yvette Drucker and City of Green Acres Mayor Joel Flores. Staff and members of the Publix toured the Port of Palm Beach on November the 18th, tour participants were able to learn about the port's current projects and see the different terminals inside the port. Now, on behalf of staff, I want to thank you, Commissioners, for your donations to the nonprofit Meals on Wheel Pie Forward event. The organization delivered 30 pies to the port on November the 22nd. We hosted a pie party, distributed pies to port staff for their Thanksgiving festivities, and donated 10 pies to the Port of Palm Beach Seafarers Center.
What kind of pies were they?
They were good.
I know they were good, but were they apple or pumpkin? Oh, they did bring some pecan, too? Yeah, they were good. Very good. Yeah, I tasted them at the green market, and wow, that was better than, nothing against Publix, but they were a step up, to say the least. Very good.
Leaps and bounds.
Yep.
Some other happenings of the port included a successful seafarers care package drive, a presentation and tour for junior high school students with Junior Leadership Palm Beach County, a visit from Century Village Presidents, and our annual holiday toy drive. Now, yesterday, we delivered 550 gifts to Azure Estates in Riviera Beach. We want to thank you and thank all of you who participated. We're looking at a video, very short, but it gives you an indication of how many gifts were actually placed so they can be distributed this coming Saturday.
Very nice.
Having some technical difficulties? All right, let's just then move on. Commissioners, lastly, let's congratulate one of our longest-tenure employees, Takaria Anderson Jones.
There she is.
She's known as T.
T.
I promoted her to Senior Manager of Counter Compliance and Accounts Receivable. T is a dedicated staff member who enjoys working with our tenants and is always willing to assist when needed and always smiling, as you can see by the picture. Congratulations to her. That's all I have, Commissioners. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to open up with the Port Infrastructure Development Program, and my plan is to give you an update on the PIDP program at the start of my engineering report for the next three years, God willing, I guess. So here we are. We're currently moving forward with the PIDP Design Build Criteria Package. The initial step is to issue a request for qualifications to define the group of interested contractor and engineering teams. That document will be advertised the first week of January and received at the end of the month to the port by potential bidders. The next step will be the request for proposals from these teams with pricing and schedules for consideration by the Board of Commissioners. Commissioners, lastly, let's congratulate one of our longest-tenured employees, Takaria Anderson Jones.
There she is.
She's known as T.
T.
I promoted her to Senior Manager of Contract Compliance and Accounts Receivable. T is a dedicated staff member who enjoys working with our tenants and is always willing to assist when needed and always smiling, as you can see by the picture. Congratulations to her. That's all I have, Commissioners. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
My pleasure as always, Commissioners. I'm going to open up with the Port Infrastructure Development Program, and my plan is to give you an update on the PIDP program at the start of my engineering report for the next three years, God willing, I guess. So, here we are. We're currently moving forward with the PIDP Design-Build Criteria Package. The initial step is to issue a request for qualifications to define the group of interested contractor and engineering teams. That document will be advertised the first week of January and received at the end of the month to the port by potential bidders. The next step will be the request for proposals from these teams with pricing and schedules for consideration by the Board of Commissioners. I'd also like to update you on the Harbor Shoal dredging. This project is in flux while we work with the Corps of Engineers in an attempt to accelerate the award and notice to proceed. And that award did take place this week. It was awarded to Great Lakes Dredging Dock Company, the lowest responsible bidder. Little different than the Achafalaya here. The delay will most likely be governed by the speed at which the contractor can install the discharge line for beach sand placement. Not only is the beach placement critical to the economics of the project, it was an $8.5 million bid, it is also required since insufficient volume is available for dumping of sand in the North Shore placement area. The timing issue is difficult at this time since we have existing draft restrictions, but expect significant sand transport over the months of January through March. As you all know, we had significant shoaling from here, or significant erosion from here all the way up to Jacksonville. There's an estimated 100 to 200 million cubic yards of sand that was in dunes now laying in the water, ready to march its way south towards us. The Corps' concern is that if they mobilize immediately for the initial shoaling, additional shoaling is likely to occur during the months of March and early April when we have our large ocean swells coming in with cold fronts. The best plan by the Corps is to continue work towards the commitments of dredging to a time that works to get the most benefit of maximum sand removal from the port. This is difficult for the port. However, if they mobilize today, shoaling certainly would occur after completion of the proposed project, leaving us with shoaling that would not be funded again until late 2023 or early 2024. Right now, the actual mobilization date is in flux while we continue to monitor the issue. We are in draft restrictions. That area is limited to the north one quarter of the channel. We're trying to work with the pilots to look at the rest of the channel and see if we can do some relaxing of the draft restrictions.
You don't have the picture of what you sent us, do you, of the shoaling that we can see from the drone?
No, I don't believe I do. I apologize.
I don't have that.
All right, well, just make sure, send it back out to everybody. Did everybody see that?
We'll get your copy to see what's going on. The shoaling is extremely evident right now because of all this loose sand, much different than we've experienced probably in the last 20 years.
Yeah.
This could be a serious.
Oh, absolutely. So, on this drone shot, everyone will get it.
You'll get it, that's right.
Oh, I mean, you can see it. So, in plain English, I know you went through a very diligent structure. What, when do we think we can get some emergency dredging? I mean, I know the Corps, I read a letter, and I had to hire an attorney to tell me what he actually said. So, what exactly are they telling us?
Right now, the award is scheduled, well, the award was made this week, the award. Mobilization is scheduled in about 45 days. Part of this is because we don't have the Achafalaya this time. The Achafalaya, I had been in contact with Vice President of Cashman Dredging, and they could be here in 48 hours. That's not the case with the dredge, probably the dredge Alask is what I'm anticipating, but this dredge requires a pipeline to be installed along the beach before they can pump sand, where the Achafalaya could dump in the offshore borrow area, or the nearshore borrow area.
So, do you know, like, were they just outbid, or was it a, or don't we even know why they selected that?
They didn't share with me the entire aspect of the bids. All I was shared with was the award to Great Lakes Dredging Dock. And that is typical of the Corps. I could file a FOIA request and get it. I could probably make a phone call and get it. But the most important part is the district has awarded to Great Lakes Dredging Dock, and that can't be changed at this time.
Well, they've been here in the past.
Yes.
So, I mean, they're a good dredge, but, you know, I'm more concerned in the next month. I mean, the waves are strong out there today. So, I mean, we need to, I know we've talked to every elected official we have, and I don't think anything's really happened, but, you know, I think the Corps is required to keep the channel open.
Yes, they are, and remember, this is the Corps' channel. For instance, if we decided to dredge it, we don't have permits to dredge it. But we, nor do we have $8.5 million.
All right.
We're working very close with the Corps. We'll keep them advised of regular soundings and all information coming from the pilots.
Okay.
And we're doing everything we can to keep this port open. I'm going to be meeting with the pilots to see if we can relax this draft restriction a little bit since it's only a quarter of our channel, and maybe things like the cruise ship has plenty of room in the southern three-quarters of the channel.
Okay.
To make passage. So, we'll continue to work with the Corps of Engineers while they accelerate dredging.
All right.
But again, if they showed up today, they'd finish the dredging, and we'd have cold fronts fill us in again.
Well, I'm not talking about the maintenance, I'm talking about emergency dredging, you know? So, they don't want to do both, in other words.
They don't separate the project into two different projects. This is a scheduled dredging, knowing that we need dredging in the first quarter of every year.
Okay.
We're working closely with them.
I understand. We're doing everything we can. Okay.
Another issue is at the request of Jerry Ward, the port engineers have been in contact with NOAA Ports Program to look at the cost sharing for installation of current meters on the offshore buoys of our channel. As critical weather periods, when the shoaling is present, these current meters may provide additional safety for the pilots to use the entrance channel by our vessels. If the pilots feel this addition could improve safety of the port, we'll look for grant funding for this installation, and we have not had time yet to meet with the pilots to discuss this issue.
Okay.
The last item I'll update you on is berth one permits. Berth one dock permits have cleared the NOAA review and biological opinion at this time, which is required before final permitting. We already have the state permits in hand. We are working with the Corps of Engineer staff to quickly obtain the final permits for this project. Once that permit is in hand, installation of the docks can proceed. Interesting issues with this permit. For instance, those issues are related to manatee migration and pile driving during manatee migration, and this one's interesting, is the potential impact to calving of North American right whales during pile driving, meaning the sound could interrupt the calving procedure.
Of whales.
North American right whales don't come this far south. Their southern limits are Canaveral, but this is what happens when you're dealing with NOAA. This item also has to be worked through the Water Resource Development Act. The port director and I have met with and discussed this with many of our politicians, both representatives, local representatives, Brian Mast, et cetera, and it has been entered into the Water Resource Development Act, the deauthorization of the north extension of the north turning basin. That needs to be done. It'll work through the Water Resource Development Act, and as soon as that is finalized between the House and the Senate, that will be approved. I continue to work with the agencies on a daily basis to facilitate this project also because it's of very much importance to our operation.
Absolutely, and we're doing everything we can, and we appreciate.
Everything possible, sir.
Exactly.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to give, you know, just give some accolades and some credit to our port engineer, Mr. Cottigan, and working with Mr. Ward, because when this came about and the information was disseminated, I, you know, I thought he did mention NOAA last meeting, and I'd just like to thank you for reaching out to him and having that dialogue, and hopefully, this will come to fruition when we may be able to proactively look at some of these things as far as the shoaling is concerning. But I just want to say thank you for reaching out to him.
Thank you, sir, and I've done with Jerry Ward for over 20 years, so I know how to work with him, and I continue to be very proactive when we're discussing these projects.
Exactly. Thank you.
Well, these current meters, initial installation will be about a quarter million dollars for the two meters on both of our buoys. That would give a lot of information to the pilots, but then there's about $30,000 a year maintenance per buoy. It's not a cheap, it's not a cheap project, and even if we got grant funding to put them in, we still have the recurring cost of $30,000 per meter. They are in operation at Port Everglades and Port Miami. Port Miami has a dog leg in the channel that makes them more important. I've been trying to reach out to my counterpart, John Fulgassong, at Port Everglades to discuss these and find out, is that maintenance number right? Do they provide any benefit to Port Everglades, which has a shaped channel more like us, a straight-in channel?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pinsky.
Chair, I'm going to cover it under J2.
Okay.
Just in time.
All right. Rest. All right. So, Commissioner reports. Commissioner Enright, anything?
Nothing here. Nothing here.
Okay, we'll save it for the comments from the board. Oh, I guess we go to old business. Uh, let's see, old business. I won, right?
Yeah.
Mr. Attorney.
Commissioners, there's nothing new to report since the last meeting. We are awaiting responses to our discovery requests, which I believe are due on Tuesday of next week, and we'll provide additional updates before the next meeting.
Anything on the cars or anything like that?
Yeah, if you don't mind, if I may ask, Mr. Meekins?
Yes.
Has been running on that one.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We've had two days of people coming out to look at the vehicles and take the walkthrough. The bids are due on Friday. We've had a total of four individuals that came out to look. We may have others that come by phone. These guys generally do this stuff on a regular basis.
Right.
So, that's where we stand right now. Friday, we will have an answer for it.
A deal.
Hopefully.
Make a deal.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir?
And what's the latest on the sale of the equipment with private assets on the current tenant?
So, there was a court event on the 13th. I was waiting on an update from that from Ivan, the other, for the attorneys.
Yes. We, it's been frustrating. We, we've, there's an assertion from Teeter's attorney that Teeter's owns some of the equipment. We have asked repeatedly for the documentation from Teeter's attorney. It has not been forthcoming, and we're at a point now where we're just going to move forward and kind of force the issue. They've, it's been a chronic issue in our dealings that we don't get timely responses. Again, we've, since day one, we've tried to work with Teeter's because I think it's in both parties' interest to work together to resolve the outstanding claims. There's a hard way to do it, and there's an easy way to do it, and we've been, we'll continue to try to work with counsel on getting the documentation.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Two, I2.
Commissioners, I2 is change order number two for Merchant's Drainage Improvements. During the construction of Merchant's Drainage, we had several changes which required adjustment to the contract price. These included some unforeseen underground obstructions, which we expect in areas of the port where we haven't been in a long time, some additional paving, and some expansion of some dock paving. This additional work totaled $20,867.95 and will be applied to the $50,000 general contingency allowance credit, which is in our contracts. It will result in a net $29,132.05 credit to the contract price. This will adjust the original contract price of $751,982 to $715,322.95.
When we first decided to do this, did we have any idea it was going to cost us three-quarters of a million dollars to do this?
Yes, we allocated approximately that much in our renewal and replacement budget, so we didn't know that this was required. And quite honestly, this had extremely poor drainage. Rarely would we take on these projects, but quite honestly, I've witnessed employees of Merchant's Drainage taking off their shoes and socks to walk across the puddles to get into the building and having to put their shoes and socks back on. It's something as owners, we owed our tenants.
Yes, sir.
Has that been paved? I was over there a week and a half ago, and I saw that it had to get paved, was all, it rated having paved. Have we paved the last week or two?
Paving?
I just was out there.
Come on, Casey. Earn your fees. Say something.
I was very invested when I walked into the building.
All right, here we go. Here's the answer.
Casey, along with Kim Lee Orner, thank you. Their goal, weather permitting, is to pave and cap the lime rock area over the drainage tomorrow, and then we're going to do a flood test with hydrant on Monday to see if all the low spots have been taken care of, and then put the cap asphalt on next week, obviously weather permitting. We were planning on doing it this week, and that swell we had come through, the rest of all the worst.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So, we request a motion to approve change order number two.
We have a motion, Commissioner Richard, second. Commissioner Enright, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries four zip. Okay, next item.
I3, you didn't think Casey came up and gave his opinion for free, did you? Item with minor additional engineering work was required at Merchant's Drainage Project for revisions to drainage drawings for coordination with FDEP permit process, and three additional site visits by the engineer to address things like obstructions.
Second. We have a, Commissioner Richard, second. Commissioner Enright, under discussion. This is pretty much the end of this project, the...
End of the project, so.
All right, I just didn't want to hit a million, you know, and this is it.
We're done.
All right, thank God. All in favor, all opposed, carries four, nothing. Okay.
Good question.
Go ahead.
Let's talk next week. There's a lot of flooding over there by heavy lift when they have their plugs, so I'm sort of fear of what we're going to do over there as well.
I'd be glad to reach out to Heavy Lift and discuss that with them, sir.
A lot of flooding where they have their plugs or their reefers.
Okay, we'll see what we can do about that. We'll take a look at it shortly.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Next item is?
J1.
J1, new business.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Item J1 is requesting the Board's approval to authorize the expenditure of $50,000 in port funds and another $50,000 in grant funds toward a project to relocate the South Florida Materials Asphalt Vault. As you know, Zynga Cement is in the middle of doing a construction project. Part of that construction project has this pipeline on your screen right now that goes from their facility out to the dock side. In their contract, they're responsible for all the underground obstructions. So far, I think they've had like 50 obstructions that they've had to get through, up-down elevation changes, everything. With that being said, what you see there on your picture now is a picture of a cement ship and unloader and vaults. That's what's being installed out there. However, where the unloader is, there is an obstruction with the South Florida Materials Vault topside, which is what you're looking at right here. Because this item is both topside obstruction and below-ground obstruction, we felt like it was the right thing to do to meet them halfway on this. The total cost of this is $460,000 estimated, and the reason for that is because it's very specific specialized piping with the asphalt heater elements, double-walled, et cetera. As I stated in the beginning, our port contribution would be $50,000 in funds from us and $50,000 we would pull from grant funds.
How is it half?
Oh, it's not, it's not quite half. We were at half and...
We were at half.
Commissioner Richard, second. Commissioner Anderson, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries four, no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Richard Pinsky. I thought this meeting was going to go a lot longer. So, good, no, this is good, but I emailed what I was going to do for my report thinking that certain Commissioners, why, no, and to Commissioner Anderson, you will be missed, and I personally want to thank you for your service and your time on the Port Commission. I've enjoyed working with you, and hopefully, there will be a life working with you after the port in some form or fashion. We just ended a first interim committee week, and I sent around the report of the, basically the overall of the insurance bill. Another item did get introduced this past week, and that's House Bill 37. I won't go into too much now, we'll get to it later, but it is going to change the Ethics Commission, your financial disclosure. Basically, the intent is to move you from a Form 1 to a Form 6 a lot more in-depth. Credit cards, you know, jewelry, all your assets, it's at a higher level, but that's not a done deal yet, but that was introduced as well. Last time, last month when we spoke, I asked the Port Commission to please allow myself and staff to work on formulating a legislative ask for the upcoming session. So, what we have for you tonight are a couple of slides. This was much better photography than what I had last month, but this is showing the view going northward and of what would be optional. This would be the $500,000, I mean, the, pardon?
That would be the $1 million request.
Yeah, the $1 million with the $500,000 request for fixing the boundary line between us and Riviera Beach, particularly Riviera Beach Heights, for beautification. The next slide is the same thing going southward. And there is some question, if you go back, Carl... And there is some question, if you go back, Carl, to the previous slide, is that the, oh, no, that's not the wall. Okay, I'm sorry, fast, go to the next one. So there is some question over where the right of way is, where the railroad right of way is, and the ability to do the radar soundings underground to find out where the fiber optics are, which all would be included as part of the planning, design and engineering to do any sort of landscaping. I did speak informally with the Florida East Coast Railroad, explained to them what we were interested in doing. They are enthusiastic, well, I wouldn't say enthusiastic, but they're very supportive of, yes, if it's on their right of way. They first asked whether it was a wall. I said, no, it's not a wall. It's just landscaping for beautification. So we're sensitive to our neighbors in Riviera Beach. They're very supportive. So this may end up being a legislative ask that's got some match money from them as, as well. Worst case scenario, if there's fiber optics and, and, and underground piping and lines that just make it untenable to put a hole in the ground, Carl, this is the wall that's looking northward.
Behind merchants.
Yeah, behind merchants. As you can see, this is maybe a tight situation to try to do some beautification. You'd be all the way on the west side of the tracks, which may or may not work. So Carl's actually, it's not the, the best makeup, but this would be some sort of a, a feature that would, worst case scenario perhaps, maybe put some plants behind it, but we could perhaps dress up the wall in somewhat, in way, yeah, like an ocean. Simulated ocean.
And where would the funding for this come?
We're going to make this a legislative request. Director Almira may want to add to the legislative session in his conversation that I, I was not part of, that the lobby, lobby team for, lobbies for all the ports meet. We have not met yet this session, although they, all the port directors had a conversation and you should chime in with that now.
Sure. As you know, Commissioners, Efted allocates 20, or gets $25 million for all 16 seaports. The ask, or they propose from the Florida Port Council, be, says for 100 million and see where it ends. But for now, we can count on 25, we're looking at 100. Let's see where that takes us. In other words, increase it by 75 million dollars.
Yeah, the last time that was done was four, five, probably five years ago. When it went from 15 million, we went up to 25 million. And so the governor is focusing on infrastructure. So Port Council's probably going to ask for 100, hope get 30 or 50, so hopefully there will be an increase, which will help us as well.
Anything would help.
Happy to answer any questions?
Questions?
If the chair.
When's the next session going to be?
The next committee week is the first week in January. There's actually three committee weeks in January and then three in February, then we take a break and session starts March 7th. Palm Beach County Day is March 8th and session ends May 5th.
Okay, and did they have a solution for the homeowners insurance crisis or are they still?
Oh, yes. I didn't tell you the rates are coming down? The rates are going to be slasher? No, the, they did do a few items and again, it's in your packet, but the, they did away with the assignment of benefit, which is a third party intervenor taking away a level of bureaucracy. They, they are mandating flood insurance if you're in a flood insurance zone. And they, they have created a reinsurance fund of a billion dollars. So that's good news that if insurance companies having trouble paying a claim. Bad news is, it's also could be used outside of Florida. So the insurance company underwriting outside of the state could access it as well. And, but it's to stabilize the market. But the big part, there was a, another bill with tax breaks that has $750 million in it for local governments. The port would be eligible if we had damage from the hurricane. So there is some rebuilding money in there, some hardening money and mitigation for local communities and setting up a DEP ongoing fund of about $50 million for, for impacts.
So they're going to mandate people that are in flood zones? I mean...
Yes, sir.
I don't know if anybody gets flood insurance, but I used to get it when it was like $200. Last year it was $600.
I get flood insurance.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, $600.
I pay more than that.
Really?
I was a date 100 for one house.
No, not for flood insurance.
Yes.
Holy geez.
I pay more than that. Every year. To the best flood insurance.
Send the bill to Richard, he'll take care of it.
All flood insured.
Send it. I get a lot of stuff in the mail.
Geez, thank you.
But, but the issue is if you don't get it, you just can't go to your carrier.
Right.
Because you didn't get it.
Right.
It's not mandating that you get it, but don't go to your carrier.
You won't get covered, right. Yeah. Go ahead.
Florida insurance is through the federal government. Now, I care of Florida insurance, but it's the federal government. I was told that if you, if, if the state of Florida end up and have a carrier for Florida insurance, they really can decide, hey, we don't want to pay the premium and they can opt out. Although you paid your, we don't want to pay you off if there's a flood and they can opt out. So I was told never to get flood insurance by an insurance carrier in the state of Florida, always go with the feds because if you do that, and they can say, hey, I went belly up, bankruptcy, there's nothing you can really do. And that's what we are concerned about Tallahassee is that if something happens and you have additional flood insurance with an insurance agency or company, they really don't have to pay. So the best thing is just to get it with the federal government like I do.
Yeah, and, and the way it's actually worded is if you're in a flood zone, you're required.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it's a little more.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that was very informative.
Chair Sicklin, there is a suggested, suggested ask, action for J two. There's a one and a two.
I move Mr. Chair to approve J two as presented to us.
Okay, we have a motion, Commissioner Anderson, on J two. We have a second. Second, Commissioner Enright, any discussion?
No.
All in favor, all opposed? Carries four, zero. And what was the other one? Do you have another one? Just one or two did you?
You just made the motion for both one and two.
Okay, good. All right. Anything else? Okay, we do have some, anything else on the agenda or just comments from the public? Ms. Shepherd? Come on up. Come on down.
Margaret Shepherd, Riviera Beach. Once again, I want to say thank you to each one of you, the Chair, Vice Chair, Mr. Richardson, of course, our outgoing Commissioner. And to Mrs. Dos, I want to say congratulations. And also, I see DeAndre Poole back there. I have to laugh when I see him. When I first went to church with him, he was that high. When he went to college, came back, they see DeAndre in the room and I was looking around, I said, where, and then I had to look up, there he was. So he's a very fine young man. I'm going to speak in his behalf and I don't think he'll give you any trouble. He's an humble young man.
If he does, we're going to send him your way.
Send him my way. I got to look for it. But his grandmother, oh my goodness. Okay. Call grandma, come get him, but he's a very fine young man. And I think you're going to enjoy him. And of course, I always call him my soul brother and that is Jeffrey Jackson. Got a lot in common. And I thank each and every one of you all. I'm not here to make trouble. I'm here to piece my community together. As I say, it's 100, even 190 of us left. And they were talking about Dr. Enright when she first came to Ivy Green and she would be very happy that most of them had died out. There's only five of us that was left. It has gone to the children, children, children. And when they call me, they try to call her name, but then they call her Doc and immediately I know who they're talking about. So I want to thank each and every one of you all. I will be back and to make sure that the port is run, I know Mr. Manny is running this port and I just appreciate him. Thank you for your service. You've always been the same. And most of all, thank you. Thank you and everyone.
All right, thank Ms. Shepherd. Good seeing you again.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Okay, thank you very much. And now Gerald Ward.
Yeah.
There he is.
Mr. Shad, I just want to make a quick housekeeping note.
Yes.
Since we are the selection of the vacant Group Two seat, it's going to be a resolution.
Okay.
So I do need you to vote.
Okay.
Either before or after.
Do it now. And do we have the resolution or?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it in their backup? Well, I know, I have it. Do they have the draft in the back?
Do you want to read it? Is it long?
Okay, I will read it.
Read it and then we'll vote on it.
Okay, Resolution 2022 dash zero eight, Resolution of the Port of Palm Beach District Board of Commissioners Appointing Candidate to Fill Group Two Vacancy. Whereas on November 8th, Commissioner Waldron's resignation became effective. Whereas Article Five, Section Six of the Port Charter grants the Board of Commissioners the authority to appoint a replacement to serve the remainder of the term created by the vacancy. And whereas the Commission reviewed letters of interest for potential candidates, deliberated and selected a replacement to fill the vacancy, now therefore be resolved that the Port of Palm Beach District, upon majority vote, Group Two vacancies shall be filled by Verisad Dos and Ms. Dos shall be sworn in and assume the Group Two Commission seat at January 3rd Commission meeting, which may be changed. And that's it.
Okay, so we need a motion for that?
Second.
Commissioner Richard, second. Commissioner Anderson, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, carries four, zero. Okay, Mr. Ward.
Good afternoon, Gary Ward. 2135 Broadway, the great city of Riviera Beach. I have been out of the country for, out of the state for two weeks and out of the country for the week and a half in Sydney, Australia at the 38th Coastal Engineering Conference, which I've gone to every other year almost since 1966. The basics are that most of the world still has a different perspective on the crazy virus. So I, I've got it down right now, but I don't think that you're as clean as you think you are. The, the number one item is NOAA Ports, which I wish I'd been here because I would have delved into deeper. NOAA Ports is a monitoring conveyance system. We have data buoy by NOAA and we have NOAA Ports, which was established 1991. It's not only current meters, it's tide gauges, it's a variety of other weight gauges, things that drive the port shoaling. Port shoaling at buoy four has been ever since 1965 when we deepened the channel. So in, in Sydney, I clearly see that maybe your two decade, is it now three decade delay, 1991 to 2022, in getting NOAA Ports for this would help the port assist towing, towing, the port pilots and obviously your financial pocket. What's coming out will ultimately be a real time system of shoaling. So you will have a daily record of, of increases in shoaling every day of the month. So I, I really want to follow up on that and I have gotten today a communication with NOAA Ports by Mr. Cottington, so I'm going to follow up more on that. Town of Palm Beach, you heard several speakers. I've been dealing in the town of Palm Beach for over a half a century. The residents of Palm Beach are, are your ally. That may not be your perception in some meetings, sometimes as bureaucrats come on hard, but in reality, what I think the mayor said today, you can benefit by having competent, adequate communication with the town of Palm Beach on a daily basis. So let's do that. The port tenants have been totally absent in communication to you, except a couple of months ago, three months or four, there was a young member of a long-term port tenant. He gave some good advice to you, but he wasn't here today and his seniors didn't speak when I was here. So we really need to get better communication with the tenants. And lastly, Ms. Dos meets one of the criteria of new Commissioners. She's young.
Exactly. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's true. Okay, any, no more comments from the public? Comments from the Commissioners? Is that right? Nothing?
Joe, I don't have a prepared speech, but I was thinking about, you know, first of all, thank you for your service. And I know that times things were tough. And I only recently realized that my first three and four years here, I honestly think I had it far more difficult than you. Everything, and I was young and brash and I had all these new ideas. I promise you, I was voted down literally on every single thing. I was vice chairman, I thought I'd be chairman after vice chairman, guess what? They didn't make me chairman. They skipped over me. And that didn't happen to you. You got to be chairman. So I, I think when a new person runs into an established body, they pretty much hit a brick wall. They hit their head and most of us, especially me, we continue to hit our head. I just hung around till I, you know. So I sincerely mean it, thank you for your time. And, you know, keep on being you. All right.
I want to thank Joe also for his service and as Wayne said, when he first got elected, when I first got elected...
He was part of it too.
They told me, the other members, just sit there, don't say too much. If you're called on, you know, then it's okay. So for the first eight years, I barely got a few words out, but this goes back. We had some very strong port commissions back then, you know, leaders in the community. So I kind of did what I was told. So for the first eight years, I didn't say much, but anyway, I, I appreciate your service and I appreciate your, your wife saying the nice things about you and you've got a big future. So good luck to you and hopefully you won't be a stranger and we'll see you around. Okay.
I just want to say...
Go ahead.
I just want to wish you well in your endeavors and hopefully you might run for something else. So we look forward to continuing to see your wife on the Riviera Beach Council and good luck. I wish you well. I just...
And one of the things I can say as I can announce my candidacy now, which is running for the best husband.
President.
Hand down. But I, I want to thank each and every one of you. I definitely want to thank many people, if you don't realize, that I ran unsuccessfully twice. And one of the things that I can implore and just submit advice to Commissioner-elect DeAndre Poole and Commissioner-appointed Verisad Dos is there is a time when you have to be politically mature and put bygones aside. I ran against Commissioner Wayne Richards, but when I got on the dais, I learned to work with him. Put those things aside and when you take that oath, that oath to, to support and defend and help the port as any way that you can. And I would just implore, you know, because I know you two ran against each other and there's been some, you know, information, misinformation, whatever, and I would say, sit down, talk and find a common ground because when you sit on this dais, you have to put those things aside and actually govern. And sometimes you govern for those that voted for you, those that didn't vote for you, as well as those that didn't even vote. So that would be one of my advices is to establish relationships and establish your own relationships. There's some misinformation out there, whether it be the town of Palm Beach, Riviera Beach, West Palm. Sit down and at least listen. And then based on the information that you receive, you can make an informed decision. And I ran against Wayne Richard, which was like the first time that I ran and we can laugh about it. And to this day, when I came on the dais with the transition and even with Dr. Gene Enright and even with Blair Sicklin, and as you can see, if it made sense and I voted my, my heart, my, looked at the information, and sometimes I would vote with Dr. N. Gene Enright, sometimes I would vote with Blair and vote for Wayne because that's what you do. I didn't come over here to be a rubber stamp for anyone. And I also, my champion was also for our great staff. We have a phenomenal staff. And once, you know, we, I always, my always cliche was hire, develop, great people. When I look at this staff, this staff is amazing. You know, all the way down to our HR, to our, you know, our media, I, media director, all the way to Takaria and everyone else, Jackie, the whole nine yards, Meekins, even our new CFO. And even when our Port Counsel Premier came on and Dr. Can, Mr. Cottington, I'm calling you doctor, but Mr. Engineer, but I had an amazing opportunity and to work with each and every one of you. And I must say, you guys are definitely right there among the best. And I, you know, and that's why I say I can walk away. And they always said, power is not conceded without a demand, but I differ because I wanted to walk away because at this time, we have two young individuals, I feel that they can really, really grow. And I'm on the top of this mountain on the backside and I wanted to, if you guys could definitely work with these two individuals, but that's my... my appeal to you guys, to don't be a pawn on somebody else's chessboard, because when you're sitting up here and you're making a decision, you have to make the decision best for your community. And last but not least, to our Executive Director, I know we've, you know, sometimes had a little bumps in the road, but my only thing is accountability. I want to hold any individual accountability, even myself, even if I, you know, did something, I always want to come back and say, hey, I misread that, or whatever the case may be, but I want to wish you good luck on your future endeavors, and that it's been a pleasure working with you as well. When I first came on, you know, we spoke, and I tried to give the information that I could, whether it be the lay of the land of the politics, or whether it's be what I saw with the port, and I know when I first got on, and I do remember that, I remember when I first got on, I would text him, hey, this sign is hanging down, or this and that and another, this and that, you know, because that's where my heart was. And one of the things I do want to champion, and hopefully one of you guys can pick it up, was to make sure that we revamp the interlocal agreement with our cities, to make sure that is our roadmap, whether it's with the city of Riviera Beach, city of West Palm Beach, but the town of Palm Beach, but there definitely needs to be a bridging of the gap for the town of Palm Beach as well. And we can look at things, but most of all, we can agree to be disagreeable, and we can do that in a very civilized way. And I wanted to thank each and every one, and I wanted to thank staff for one of those, and Mr. Carl Baker, I cannot, the kids love you. When I tell you, you know, I still get calls, and they love you, your demeanor, and how you were able to explain and teach the information to them, so I want to give each and every one, and thank you for my journey here. I won't be far, I'm still stone, rock and throw away, but I still will be here, and I want to thank each and every one here on the council, from Ms. Commissioner Richards, Commissioner Sicklin, Commissioner Jean Enright, thank you for my, you know, allowing me to serve. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, let's listen to Commissioner Richards on why we have to change the date, which...
We don't have a date.
Yeah, it's always the first Tuesday in January.
Right, you've done that for years.
I mean, for the last 30-something years, but...
You want to keep it in front?
No, I mean, I mean, you're not coming back that day, or when are you coming?
But, what you mentioned, it's, it's, it's ringing in the news.
Yeah, it's just ceremonial.
We're also, Chair Sicklin, we are also selecting Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner, and Committee of Directors.
You need to be there.
Yeah, I need to be there.
Um...
And your parking space, so I need to be there. You're not back.
I don't see how, up, but, Richard Pinsky.
How's Thursday the 5th?
I mean, is there anything that, in the charter, anything? I know we've always done it on the, I think.
First Tuesday, the first Tuesday.
I'll defer to your attorney, but the charter says, whenever practicable.
Do we have, can you, someone, we don't have a calendar or anything?
I have one. What about, wait, what about the Wednesday? Wednesday, about...
Oh, there we go, it's up there.
I'm backwards, Thursday the 5th.
So, you're saying Thursday the 5th, 4 o'clock?
That works.
All right. Once again, Wayne, Jean is bending over backwards, will you?
I am, because I have things to do.
That's right, she's a busy person. Don't say those things under your breath. All right, Thursday the 5th.
So, so the 4th?
And that's okay, so we can, basically, Mr. Attorney, we can do it, whatever's practical?
Yes, you have discretion, yes.
So, the 5th?
The 5th.
Wayne?
Thank you.
4 o'clock?
All right, anything else? Anybody else? Okay, then, I guess we're adjourned.